Welcome to the special council meeting of Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four at four forty P M in council chambers in Gia Dung. We acknowledge that the town of Kirkland Lake is located on the traditional territory of Algonquin peoples, including Beaver House First Nation, and unceded territory of other indigenous peoples. We recognize the presence of Algonquin and Ishnabe, Ojibwe Cree and Maiti people in our community since time immemorial and honor their stewardship and care of these lands. We hereby affirm our continued commitment and responsibility to reconciliation. Item number one, call to order in a moment of silence. Item number two, approval of the agenda?
Moved by Councilor Janice Ranger, seconded by Councilor LaShaba. Being resolved of the agenda for the special meeting of council held on Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. We approved as amended to allow for the chief administrative officer to present first under item six point one. And finally, that section thirty-two and forty-five of the town of Kirkland Lake's procedural by law number fifteen seventy-five, as amended, be suspended to permit debate and motion from the floor in relation to item six point one, two thousand and twenty-four budget deliberations.
All in favor? Opposed? None noted? Item carried unanimous. Item number three, declaration of the culinary interest? None noted. Item number five, for petitions and delegations, there are none this evening. Item number five, acceptance of minutes and recommendations, again, there are none this evening. At this time, I will hand the chair over to Finance Chair Janice Ranger. Point one, two thousand and twenty-three budget deliberation day.
Sorry, twenty-four.
Alright. Budget deliberations, day one. Chief Administrative Officer Alan Smith, C E O, will make comments.
Thank you, um, I can share to the council. Uh, Treasurer Crocker will respond shortly to the questions from, uh, the April fourth public meeting that contain to the budget. I do want to state that there were several questions that were not directly related to the budget. Some were operational in nature, and some related to confidential collective bargaining negotiations. That I would like well to address, um, the public comments shortly. Before he does, I just want to take a minute to formally recognize the whole Kirkland Lake team who work diligently to provide exceptional service and continue to strive to develop a public service done right. I am proud to be part of such a diverse team that encompasses a wide array of talents. Regardless of residential location, every member of the Kirkland Lake team, from summer students to the departments operating three hundred and sixty-five days a year, share a genuine concern for the welfare of the community. All members of the Kirkland Lake team want to see the town flourish as a vibrant and prosperous community and want Kirkland Lake to continue to be the right environment for you, diverse, thriving, and efficient. Accusing staff of not caring based on where they live is unjust and undermines the diverse perspectives and experiences the individuals bring to the table. Dedication and passion are not contingent of where one lives. As a reminder, public meetings are to discuss specific topics rather than making baseless assumptions about people's climate. Should there be any concerns about the commitment and dedication of any staff member or concerns regarding the dated day operations of staff from specific departments, I strongly encourage you to utilize the formal complaint submission process to share your concerns. Detailed information about the process can find on our policy page on our website, specifically policy number two thousand and twenty dash zero twenty-seven. I will now ask Mr. Crocker to address the budgetary questions that were raised during the April fourth public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair, to all the council and to the public. So as Alan mentioned, there's other questions, some of them were directly related to budget, and I'll have answers for those ones. Some were kind of related to budget, I'll try and address those as well, and some you won't hear an answer tonight because they're really not related to the budget. So there's no particular order other than I try and pick up my scribble notes from that evening. So several of them, these, the first ones I'm going to kind of talk to weren't directly budget, although they're somewhat budget. Bylaw, is it revenue neutral and why? So, no, bylaw isn't a profit center, so it's not designed to be revenue neutral. Budget based on expectations and history. I think this is, this is one of those areas where it's very typical of most of our operations. You know, the revenues we, we receive are not anticipated to cover off a budget of a particular department or area. And, you know, the numbers that are in there now are based on our best estimates. Like, I will probably say that about twenty-six times tonight. Best estimates based on prior year, based on prior budgets. Anyways. Uh, Public Works, two people, this kind of ties in with what Alan was saying. These, these are good comments, you know, that you could use the process to ask these questions because they're more operational in nature and, and get a, a good answer from it. But right now, it's driven by union agreements. Uh, Public Works, parking and beating storm, move, basically the same answer. It's, you know, happy to have the question, but we should probably use the, the other methods to get those kind of answers. Uh, Public Works, current revenue for long, uh, they're looking at it now. Uh, the asset management plan, so are vehicles monitored for mileage per week, per month, personal use? So, you know, just to be clear, town policy is that personal use is not allowed on vehicles. Um, we are in the process of investigating a, a program, an actual piece of software for all of our vehicles to track more closely things like mileage and maintenance and repairs. Uh, we're not really there yet to make a decision on it. For the larger pieces of equipment, we already track costs and we have to track mileage as part of the, the rest of our process. So it is happening, it's, you know, it's certainly a goal to make it more fulsome going forward. I'll make some of the decisions that are going to be, the asset management plan is going to make suggestions for. Uh, fire. So there was a question about the accrual, I just want to point out it's a two thousand and twenty tree number, and privacy confidentiality doesn't let me directly answer it. Um, the timing of the adjustment, um, is determined by accounting standards, it's not a random, we put it there for any purpose other than meeting standards. Uh, actuals, so this is, this was one that I found a little bit challenging. Uh, the comment was we were being dishonest and that we weren't able to do a proper calculation of the increase and stuff like that. So I'm just going to take a minute to kind of educate everybody on the budget process if you don't mind. It's important to recognize that prior year actuals do not drive current year budget. We do not use actual figures to calculate the tax levy. The tax levy is calculated, taking whatever's in the budget, divided by the assessment, and we come out with a tax rate and we divide it up into the various categories. Certainly, the prior year actuals would inform and all of the directors will use them to help them come at their, their new budget numbers. It's not done in a vacuum, it's not saying, well, that's two thousand and twenty-three, this is two thousand and twenty-four. You will make those adjustments. Um, but they're not comparable, they're in there for information purposes only. I did say in the report, that's what they're in there for, and they're not final. Wouldn't be making decisions based on numbers that aren't complete. So, you know, the seven point seven, uh, my notes were particularly good, I wasn't keeping up at that point. You know, what was presented is exactly the way the standards require the budget municipal act. So the changes, the change in the municipal tax levy is calculated by the difference between the budget from last year to this year. That's the actual increase. And like I said, prior year figures are there for information purposes to help everybody kind of frame what actually happened compared to budget. Uh, the two new hires, um, keep this very brief. This is really kind of very operational as well, while, while we do recognize there's an increase in the budget because of it. Uh, but they resulted from negotiations with the union. My, my short comment is that, you know, recent arbitration awards have ranged from three to four man crews. And I think those arbitration awards were based on a safety argument, so we'll be answering a couple of questions there. Uh, comparable municipality, twelve, eleven, ten firefighters. Um, I'm not familiar with it, only had four days, so I can't come up with that. I wasn't part of the negotiating team, but I do know between that and there was a couple other questions around shared services, mutual aid, automatic aid, they were all considered. It's part of the process and such, I mean, to a new union. Uh, strategic plan. Um, again, was asked if there was, if it was in the strategic plan to hire the two new firefighters. I'm getting a little bit off here again, it's more or less operating, but um, strategic plans are not prescriptive. They don't come out and say you have to hire three people, you have to hire two people. Sometimes they have a little bit of direction about, you know, filling holes in, in certain departments and stuff, but they're not, they're meant to give direction on the strategic priorities of council and the community, and then it's up to the management team to apply that. So, you know, you would not see the direct direction in a strategic plan to hire people typically. Uh, volunteers, why do we need them to be living in K L? Um, right now, there's a bylaw requirement for that, and I, and I'm assuming that the bylaw was put into place. Don't have enough time to really go back and find reasoning and stuff. But that's our desire to have a quick response if they're living closer to the community itself. The working hours are the agreement as well, which were subject to negotiation and bylaw. And the final one that I picked up on this particular area, reduction of thirty volunteers reached. And that would somehow dial back the number of full-time firefighters we have, that's not in the agreement. And that would certainly be up to council in the future if, you know, if that was on their agenda at one time. Economic development, um. So, again, I'm just going to go off on a side here for a little bit because the comment is about it being in third position on the survey. I don't want to quibble with it other than I just want to be very clear on the methodology in that survey. The survey did not rank people's priorities. So, you know, you were cho, you were asked to pick your five most important and five least important to you, but you didn't rank. You didn't rank them, you didn't accumulate the information in a ranking system. So it's fair to say it was in third position, but it's in third position because, you know, there was enough votes for it to be on the one to five list. It doesn't mean that everybody voted for it to be in third position. So I'm not diminishing, it was very important recognition by the public that they wanted. I just wanted to be clear, it is not a ranking survey. Yeah, sorry, development and price services, so there's a lot of changes going on there, questions are good questions. Keep in mind, so development services, we've had some of the responsibilities that used to be in that department, but moved over to Public Works. We have the map tax now, we have a tourism corporation. Um, we have some shared services going between admin and development services. The strategic initiative coordinator will be spending some time in development services as well. Um, so we weren't, you're not shorting that department, uh, management team. It's really just a reflection of where the workload is and where the skill set is in our staff. Um, health and safety, um, there was a stop in the budget, and that's being handled by committee. You know, I don't really have a comment about the workload, you know, I'm assuming people wouldn't volunteer for the committee if we couldn't do the job. Uh, capital, the ranking system, so, um, this one's, was a little bit confusing to me. In page two of the submission in March, we learned about what the ranking system is. And so just as, you can look at it if you want, but just to be clear, a one isn't a top priority, a four is a top priority. And that's on page two of the capital budget to tell you what's urgent, it's not, I mean, you're not being legit. Sunshine list. Again, it's not truly, it's not a direct budget question, but we'll make the comment though that the comparator level is chosen to this main source does not have a full fire team, and it does not have a long-term care room. So a very large portion of our sunshine, and this comes from those two departments, so we're not really particularly comparable. Um, Alan already spoke of it, the living out of town. Um, I would like to kind of reiterate that, you know, all positions are advertised. We're open to anybody applying, and when the process, we go through a very vigorous process, so. Uh, T P R sale. So, I, I have a comment about that in the sense that any decisions, whether it's on T P R, and I want to be very clear, whether it's on T P R or any other part of Kirkland Lake operations um, would be subject to privacy and confidentiality type of considerations long before there'd be any kind of public discussions around stuff like that, and that's normal. We don't, you know, many, many decisions require to be, you know, uh, privacy component to it until we get to a stage where it's, you know, decisions are actually being made. Public would be informed as soon as practical for any significant change in operations. And the fire comment about full-time versus part, part-time volunteers, it's the exact same kind of statement, which is right, that any decisions, any department. There was a questionnaire received by email asking if nine point eight percent was actually the amount we were posing, which it is. And they were asking, what was that being spent on? Um, I guess I'll make a general comment that it's being spent across the board within our operations. Um, the budget lays out the specific areas where dollars are being spent. Uh, and it's, and another small chunk of it's being spent in capital as well, not just operations. Um, water, wastewater rates calculations. So there was somebody taking issue with the way we do our water wastewater, residential water wastewater, which does not have meter systems. Uh, fair comment, we all know that some type of meter system would probably be perfect if we could get to it. Um, we have, you know, whatever, ninety-year-old homes to five-year-old homes, and none of them were ever identified to have meters put into them. So retrofitting it would be a very difficult and costly process. Uh, there is, there is an upcoming, sort of the agenda talking about new builds. Um, but I will say, so I did a bit of a, a quick search on the idea of whether or not we're really particularly odd or unfair in some way. Any system is going to be inherently unfair other than a meter system. I'll be very clear about that, there's no way to, to estimate how much water a house is using that works well. We've had suggestions from, you know, how many kitchens and bathrooms to how many people live there. And so the kitchens and bathrooms one is basically very similar to what we have now, we're talking rooms, it's not really particularly different. The people one, it would be, uh, sounds right, uh, but it'd be, it would be a misery to try and enforce it. Or try to calculate it, you know, what happens when your child goes away to school for four months? Do you get a break on your water during those four months? If, you know, your family changes significantly, how, how do we track those changes in, in, and in the first place? How do we identify how many people are living in a home? Um, we already, we have a system in place where building permits and inspections kind of drive the how many rooms are in a building and what type of rooms. Um, like I said, I'm not pretending that that's perfect. Um, but it's more or less, it's our approximation to get to a number that we can all kind of at least understand, it's upfront, you know exactly what's going on, we're not hiding the billing process. Um, and like I said earlier, there are other communities that use a very similar standard. So it's not, you know, there's lots of communities that are like us that do not have meters in all of their residential homes, and they use some type of the system to kind of approximate how much water a home will be using. So without meters, it's, it, they're all approximations, they're all estimates. I have quite a few comments and questions about T P R. So I just want to kind of reiterate a couple of things we said in the first report, a little bit more detail perhaps. You know, they say, they face some very significant challenges in the last year, uh, related to overtime, sick, long-term disability, short-term disability. Um, we, they still live in a, not a COVID world, but certainly a post-COVID world, where their people have been working very hard for very long, and they still have many of the same standards that were imposed under COVID. So they have a cold, a respiratory, um, infection going through the, the home, you have to meet many of the standards that are relatively new. Anyways, they have quite a bit of challenges in, in staff being sick, and so they spend an awful lot of money in overtime, over three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, turnover, again, this is kind of a, and uh, consistent with the rest of the health industry, there's a lot of turnover right now in this industry. People are burnt out, people have been challenged in ways they never did before. So the turnover is very normal, it's not just our long-term care home, hospitals, other long-term care homes. Anybody in the health industry has seen this kind of thing. So last year, they had forty people who, who left or were, were terminated. They hired fifty-two, you had to spend a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars to train the new employees. Um, there was three over three hundred thousand dollars in direct sick time. That's not, so the overtime I mentioned earlier, that's when somebody goes off sick. T P R is such that you have to have somebody replace it, you can't make do with reduced staff, that's the rules under the Long-Term Care and Health Acts. So you're going to spend more, double or triple your cost when people are sick. And of course, there's the new union agreements, which everybody, which went through council a, a few weeks ago, or a few months ago, I guess now. Um, there is some good news in that area. Uh, if you, if you're a bit of a government policy walk or something, you know that the provincial government just passed their budget a couple weeks ago, and they announced one point two billion dollars for long-term care homes. Uh, the problem we have sitting here tonight is, I don't know what that means for T P R. They've, they've, you know, they're very good at making the announcement, and then you just don't know when we'll know the details of how, how much that means in long-term years. Dollars for us. Um, you know, they talked about a six point six percent increase in their level of care, well, we have four types of level of care funding, so we don't know which type they're talking about. They talked to an increase in funding for nurses, P S Ws, allied health professions. Again, we don't know which particular bucket they're talking about. So I'm kind of in a position here where I don't know what I'm talking about. I don't know what the numbers are that are coming, um, but it is a good news announcement. We do expect there to be some, some significant improvements, we just can't say yet. Um, tax, so I was asked this question, I wasn't prepared for it last time, I'm a little bit better prepared for it today. So right now, I'm off of the questions now, I'm kind of more feeding in a couple of things that have been asked of them. In two thousand and twenty-three, at this point, at the end of March, we had four point seven million dollars of taxes outstanding. Now that sounds like a bigger number than you guys are used to hearing, uh, but I just want to remind you, at the end of March, we're in the middle of a billing cycle. So we have just billed taxes and people are starting to pay their bills. So it is normal, last year, it was four point seven one, this year is four point seven nine. So it's very consistent between years in the sense, at this point in time. In another two weeks from now, that number will drop quite a bit to do the next due date. Actually, it might be next week if I remember right, so you'll, that number will drop again. Um, I would like to point out and remind everybody, we are going through the tax sale process right now. It's not, hasn't been advertised, we haven't reached the stage yet where we finalize it. But there's thirty-nine properties on that list, and there's a little bit over six hundred thousand dollars tied up in that tax sale process. So as we move forward, there'll be better and more complete public information, but at this point, I'm just giving you kind of the broad brushstrokes about where we sit with taxes. Yeah, I believe I've covered off most of our, I wanted to start with, and then back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thanks, again.
Next, one question, one other question. Again, five for the motions. There are, okay, so do you really, really don't, she's considered very new, you know, just like, you know. Yeah, we can start with questions. Okay, so, um, sorry for the conversation, but I know that there's going to be a lot of, um, questions and I want to keep things in order, so we'll start with questions from the floor. And I'm going to do this a lot because it comes to me.
So if you want to, the order of deliberations.
Yeah, we're going to go in, um, so if you can see on the agenda, we'll start with order deliberations, and we'll start with water and wastewater, please. So if you have, uh, questions going forward. Anyone? Okay, uh, operating, questions from the floor. Capital.
Councilor Owen. Yes, we, Madam Chair, I, I have a couple of questions for, yeah, Public Works. We've listed a plow truck here to replace. I'm assuming that that doubles as a dump truck as well, especially.
Sorry, can you, uh, so you're anything like any paper, Aaron?
Okay.
So all motions will be considered by, uh, sorry, I need you when you're going to bring forward a question to list the num, the number item so that we can follow along.
Oh, okay.
Could the rest of you remember that, please?
Okay, as long as I can still ask a question.
Yes, absolutely, just so that we all.
Maybe I was going to be ruled out of the board once again.
Sorry, go ahead.
Anyways, Stefan, I'm assuming that a plow truck is also used as a dump truck to any semblance?
Yes.
Okay, because initially I had concerns thinking that we had two graders and providing another plow truck, but it'll be a C twelve here. And the, I, landfill is also in your.
Yes.
What's the number?
Well, I'm getting there, please.
No, no, thank you.
Um, number twenty-one.
Thank you.
I'm getting there. Replacement of, of landfill office. Now, I know it's less than ideal because we don't have electricity to it. I know it's less than ideal because we do not have plumbing to it. We use an outhouse. And we use a generator and we use a heater, but, um, I'm not sure that it's a health and safety issue. I've been in it, it's, seemed fine to me. I mean, it's not, it's not like sitting in town hall, no.
Through you, Madam Chair. Uh, my understanding is that that facility has been inspected, and there are some health concern in regards to the age of the building. The smell is indicative, indicative, indicative of mold. It's been there a long time, it's by far ready to be, which is its age and condition.
Uh, Apollo, please.
Yeah.
Have we looked into mold remediation? Rather than replacement of the building, because I'm sure it would be cheaper than replacing the building.
You, Madam Chair, know that's not something that we had entertained. Considering the age of the asset, we looked at replacement.
Are you satisfied with that?
Well, yeah, sure. Okay, just.
Next one.
Yes, and I'm not sure, again, because this is airport, is airport also, okay, it's item number twenty-three. What kind of lakes are they? Like, I mean, I'm trying to get a grasp on whether we really need to replace them, and I have no idea what they are.
Okay, I would have to actually get back to you on that one, because I'm not sure if they're related to the landing strip. I would have to have a little bit more detail on that.
Oh, okay, not, not a problem.
I believe they are, I'm just not ready to say a hundred percent.
Yeah.
I believe they are the landing strips.
Yeah, okay, um. Yeah, okay, to you, Madam Chair. That's what I'm guessing at. So that's what I'll continue to guess at. You don't need to get back to me. Thank you. And that's.
Yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
It's the identifiers at the end of the runway.
Okay.
We could Google search and tell someone it is.
Thank you.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. I'm just, that just shows my age. I'm not a Google person. I would have had to go to the library and look it up. Thank you, Counselor Casey.
I work in high school.
Any other questions about capital? So, oh.
Sorry, just to interject. Taylor Avenue. I wasn't, I didn't expect to get into the Capitol places quickly. Taylor Avenue, the.
What's the number?
Oh, yeah, fifteen. Taylor Avenue, Madam Chair. So we got back. Completed engineering work, I guess, and they've given us a quote for what we're going to put the RPO to. The original amount was eight million dollars. Last time we talked, it was down to about five. Right now, it's at three point eight million and it has a five percent contingency built into it. So I just want to be clear that that's the numbers that are out there right now based on what the engineering firm has told us. And I guess they talked to some of the contractors to make sure they're in the right ballpark.
Counselor Dickens, to you, Madam Finance Chair, to the Treasurer, just for clarity. The two million five hundred and four thousand, you're saying, oh, sorry, same item, fifteen? You're saying that it jumped to three point eight million now, is that?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes, that's correct. And that was after much of the. The ori- so the original engineering was bringing up to what we call the new, a new build standard. So we've removed an awful lot of stuff to get it down to address the actual, just the underlying issues that the infrastructure installed.
Um, yeah. To you, Madam Chair, to the Treasurer. So how does that, like, where does the additional one point three million come from and does?
Madam Chair, I should have completed my thoughts when I was originally said, so both gas tax and OSF will be used to make up the difference. It won't go to, it's not, not the tax levy and the other government funding stays the same. So OSF and gas tax.
Counselor Kylie.
Through you, your worship. I always thought it was. About a million dollars to replace the infrastructure and the street. Why is Taylor so expensive?
Through you, Madam Chair. Taylor Avenue. Has been quite unique when it came to the design because of the underlying bedrock. The existing infrastructure, the sanitary and the water are basically quite literally lying on bedrock. And we need to sink that down much deeper into the road to meet. Ongoing standards. Due to frost, we have to get it down deeper. And that's the the main reason of the higher cost. Blasting rock is very expensive.
Counselor Owen.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair, to Director Stefan. Just for my own clarification, part of Taylor has already been done, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we're starting. From LaBelle, I think it is, or in maybe one street this side of LaBelle. And we're starting from where we stopped before. We're not going.
Exactly right, exactly where it had ended before. And now it's two hundred and forty meter long job going towards the west.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the floor? I'm going to ask for the mayor to come up. I have one question.
Thank you, Finance Chair. Go ahead.
Thank you, Counselor. It may be that Bonnie has to come up for my question. And or Kim. So it's number three, the daycare window replacement. Has there been any communication or conversation with the challenges that we're having with this budget? Putting the building itself up for sale and removing it from our asset plan? Or is this something that we can certainly look at in the near future?
To you, Mayor, to Counselor Ranger. And that was brought up at that past meeting as well. And I think there's a lot of validity in that. That is, we will have to have further discussions. Is this asset something that we want to continue to hang on to? So at at first glance, we aren't losing money on it, but as you're well aware, the older an asset gets, the more money that has to go back into it. So it may be something that we want to look at. Seeing if there's another community entity that would like to purchase it. As Treasurer Lloyd mentioned last week, it may not be as easy as just putting a for sale sign on it, being sold for the same matter. And I think it's very important that we make sure that we maintain the 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 employment of the people in daycare as well as the number of heads that we have in daycare. Because they are provincially designated, how many we get in current life, we don't want to lose those. So it may not be in the municipality's best interest to. Put ourselves in a situation where the daycare would close, but I think it's very much worth looking at. Is there an opportunity for us to divest again of that property and still maintain the daycare? Thank you.
Okay, so we'll now, we'll now move into motions on the floor.
Okay, are we doing, sorry, just a point of clarification, are we doing it in the same order or rebron?
So I'm going to read.
Okay, go ahead.
My notes.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have the capital list with numbers beside the items and I've asked that you identify the corresponding number and the entire name of the project for ease when following in proper direction to be received. All motions will be considered by order of hands up first. But I actually, we will be starting on. With the left side of the, my left side of the table and we're being in this direction. Since the mayor is taking my chair, she will go first. We will need movers and seconders for all motions. If you have any motions, just, oh, that's really. If there are any motions asking for a percentage reduction of the total budget to ask, to eliminate expenditures. And not seeking reversions, you should request the treasurer to comment on the impacts as this will trigger staff having to review the options. Put forth before council and we will trigger a rescheduling of the proposed date of passage of the budget, looking at April twenty-fifth meeting day. Okay, questions about the statements?
Yeah, point of order, please. I I. I'm having a problem with this because last, last, last year. The motion was brought forward to have a global reduction. And at the time, we said it was too late because we're already gone through this exercise of trying to take this, take things that were here and there and there. And this year, I think that we have a motion coming up to, again, the motion seeks to reduce. To come to a certain percentage, I would think that that motion should be entertained first. Because if that motion passes, then the the rest of our exercise here will be really, we're so fine. Or maybe, maybe not, it's a sign, maybe the treasurer can address that because we can't even do it like this. I just don't want to end up the same situation that the mover ended up last year with my. Motion was kind of really, at the end of the day, useless.
So.
I'm sure. I I think, just to be clear, in in my mind. The the previous section was to ask questions about what was in the budget. And and this section is where you, if you want to change pieces of the budget, this is where we're at now. Last year, it was a bit of a combined piece. The questions and the motions were were happening at the same time. So we just kind of put a little bit more structure in it this time around. So, you know, we answer the questions and then you have the motions. If there's questions associated with the motions, I'd be glad, you know, I would certainly make an effort to answer at that time as well. But it was more just to kind of put some structure on it, not to create some kind of different process. That helps at all.
Does that clarify for you? Does that?
Well, I'm. That's, that's fine. I, again, I'm just speaking generally, generally, that we should really look at a motion that seeks to have a global reduction first. And then maybe you want to follow this personally. This exercise, to me, I really don't have any, a good understanding of it because if I'm asking a department to remove something. I don't know how important that something is to the department. I don't, I'm not part of that department, but again, that aside, I think that the the motions that's coming forward. That we we have should be entertained.
So Counselor Shallow, I will try to explain that. I maybe I didn't make it clear that when a motion is put forward, we will be asking the treasurer what would be the consequences of removing that item. And he may draw upon the department head to help assist in answering that question. So as counselors and the mayor bring forward motions. There will be that opportunity to see what the repercussions will be for that, if it's a removal of the item.
Follow-up question, please.
Sure.
Yes.
Thank you, my next chair. Just for clarity, and it's a process question. I understand, and maybe I'm wrong, but as counsel, we pass budgets, we don't approve expenditures in this exercise, even though it was done before last year or maybe before. It's too close to us just approving expenditures if we're going line by line. And I I think part of what our concern is that. The department heads and the directors and the CEO are more familiar with individual departments and what they actually need. So that's where our our direction is coming from. If you just ask for a. For the CEO and staff to relook at the budget and try to bring it down a little bit. So that touched a starter.
Point of order. So the chair has identified the process of how things were going to occur. And it appears to me, Madam Chair, that we are debating a specific resolution rather than the order that you have laid out. So is that to your discretion, your role on that?
Yes, thank you, your mayor, just. Counselor Owen.
Yes, through you, Chair.
Sorry.
Oh, okay.
So. We're going to continue in the process and go through the exercise of motions on items. That's my decision and I've reviewed the options and I feel that it will make it a good exercise for the public as well as for us as counselors. To be responsible and accountable for specific items. Potentially being removed or not removed and holding us to looking at all of the lines in the budget to make sure that we understand that. What we are asking the public to pay, we have reviewed and it's in everybody's best interest. So we're, we're going to continue, we're going to start now.
Okay, Madam.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I I don't know where all the confusion is. We had a question period. I had questions about specific things in the, in the budget. I asked them. That was when the time passed, not now.
That's fine, Counselor Owens. We're gonna, we don't, there's no need for any more statements. We're going to go for motions. So we're going to start with the Honorable Mayor. You want to start, please?
Thank you, Finance Chair. So I do have three, as previously stated, a few council meetings ago, budget meetings ago. I will move and this motion would be seconded by Casey Owens. It is not an item rather than a holistic approach, as previously stated. My motion reads that staff be directed to use the dollar amount equivalent to two percent from the tax stabilization reserves to decrease tax levy requirements for the twenty twenty-four budget.
Yeah, open up, I'm going to open up the floor and question first. Yeah, sorry.
So my justification on this is the tax stabilization fund has been built up over the years to address exactly these kind of issues. We've jumped just over half from last year's budget and last year's final numbers as well. I think it is a good idea to reduce the burden straight off the gate by using tax stabilization. I believe it addresses some of the tax levy burden as well as showing financial management as well.
Treasurer? Do you have any comments? Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. Counselor Owens.
Owens, yeah. Yes, I I agree. I think that's the intended purpose of that tax or that reserve. It will help lessen the burden. So I think it's a, it's a good avenue or a good approach to use for this year.
Treasurer, can you?
Me first?
Yeah.
Sure. So again, it is, it's there. There's enough dollars to do that. It's within councils' review to make that kind of a decision. So, you know, I guess what I'm saying is certainly it's within our resources to do that.
Counselor Dickens, to you, Madam Finance Chair, to the Treasurer, just ballpark what this, I believe, to.
To you, Madam Chair, that would be close to two hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Counselor Kylie.
I kind of agree with what the mayor is proposing. Difficult to say. What we're going to use those funds for. Can we be more specific? Like I, I have a motion to. Pay for the old pool renovations from from that fund. It's a hundred and six, hundred and sixty thousand, eight fifty.
Honorable Mayor, so I definitely don't think that my motion would take away from your motion. My motion is specifically to use. That equivalent of two percent right off the top before anything else is done. I myself have other resolutions that will also take other funds, I believe, may lessen the burden as well. So definitely, this motion doesn't take away from the fact that you or any other council member wishes to use that fund either.
Okay.
The only, sorry, the only thing I would caution is tax stabilization reserve is specifically to stabilize the taxation and not specific, specific. Capital projects. That's the only point that I would point out. Counselor Owen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that I support this, this idea. It's an excellent idea. That's what the money was put there for, to be used. I've been out in the community more since we've been in the process because I wanted a feedback. And the nine point eight is, is bothering people. We also stand to be criticized if we keep putting money into, and this is Casey Owens. Then if we keep putting money into reserves and then never use them. You know, we're just building up money and not using it for the purposes it was intended. So I fully a hundred percent. Support this and. Support this, and this way we do not cut any services, any employment, anything. We just reduce the taxes with money we've already collected. Thank you.
Counselor Shaba?
Yeah, uh, through Madam Chair, to Treasure, uh, these two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, just accumulation of money over time was just a. For last year, if so, so what did we do with the money from from last budget?
Madam Chair, sorry, Shaba, um, I believe the number came from twenty twenty, if I'm not mistaken. Might have been twenty twenty one, we ran a significant surplus. And some of the dollars from that surplus were identified to go into a specific reserve for all this, this particular reserve. It was, it was essentially one year until that particular reserve. The surplus that is in the budget is an accumulation of many years. So, yeah. Sorry, I, I think it was twenty twenty, but I'm not a hundred percent sure what year it was created.
So follow up, um. So what if we exhaust this, uh, then I mean, we start on the weekend to build towards for another day.
Yeah, through you, through you, Madam Chair. Yeah, that's very prudent. The idea, you know, um, the reserves, as was well, well commented. The reserves are there to to answer problems and questions and challenges that we have. They're not meant there, not meant to just sit there doing nothing. And we, and we can replenish them, you know, through the budget process and through other, depending on our circumstances. And there's other ways also to replenish those reserves, primarily through the budget. So, yes, council can certainly direct that at any point. We identify any surpluses to go to like a specific reserve like this one.
And, sorry, just for clarification, um, Lloyd, I do have the numbers here, but do you know how much the tax stabilization fund currently has?
Sure, off the top of my head, I think it's one point one million.
Yeah.
That hasn't changed in the last two years.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we'll take it to the vote. Those in favor of using two percent of the tax stabilization fund to reduce. The proposed nine point ten, yeah, oh.
Through your Madam Chair, um, I just made some uh administrative changes to the motion. Uh, moved by uh Mayor Stacy White, seconded by Counselor Rick Owens. Uh, that the dollar amount equivalent to two percent from the tax stabilization reserve be used to decrease the tax levy requirements for the twenty twenty four budget.
All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, your second motion?
Thank you. Uh, so noting changes made by uh clerk, I will remove that staff be directly. So my next one is item number thirty five. Um. My suggestion is to utilize funds from the organizational restructure and efficiency reserves. To fund the town hall renovations, development services, capital project, projected to cost twenty thousand dollars. So that would remove another twenty thousand from the tax levy. Uh, my. Reasons for this, you don't have to recognize me again for comments, um, is that's exactly what the reserves were set out for. Is, it's in the description that um, this is going to uh promote efficiency. In our departments, um, and restructuring of that department as well. So it kind of fits that reserve perfectly to use those funds. It is, sorry, moved by me and seconded by Rick Owen. Number thirty five, thirty five?
Counselor Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And again, this is reserve funds being used. It's funds we put away for this specific purpose. It's the correct use of the funds, and it reduces the burden, albeit a little bit to the uh tax levy. So I, I'm fully supporting this uh motion. Thank you.
Counselor Kylie?
Through you, uh, Madam Chair. Uh, what item number is that?
Number thirty five.
Thirty five? Thank you.
Counselor Dickens?
Yeah, to you, um, Madam Finance Chair, uh, to the mayor. Uh, what's the name of the funding and just for information?
Okay, um, it is on, oh, it says page one of one. It's tab number five in our book. And it is actually org restructure and efficiency. The name has two hundred and twenty nine thousand and change.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Could you read the motion, please?
Certainly. Um, moved by Mayor Casey White, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. That funds from the org restructure and efficiency reserve. Uh, funded the town hall renovations, development services, capital project, uh, projected to cost twenty thousand dollars, which is item number three.
All in favor? None opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, my third and final item is item number nine. Um, moved by me and seconded again by Rick Owen.
Did you read the title of the?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, uh, it is the Town Hall Capital Project Town Hall Renovations Development Services. Item number nine, yeah.
That's still in storage containers?
Yes. Oh, sorry, wait.
Yeah.
Oh, no, that's the second part. Sorry. Uh, storage containers, public works in the amount of thirty five, six, one, six.
That's the one.
Item number nine, yeah, sorry. So my motion, it will read. Remove the capital project storage containers, public works in the amount of thirty five thousand, six hundred and sixteen. And to utilize office space freed up for moving staff to town hall. The capital project town hall renovations, development services, previously stated item number thirty five. And to investigate digitization of files, I, that portion can be removed.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Through Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I think you should get the treasure to speak to this.
Okay, uh, I'll just have, who's the seconder? Uh, Counselor Rick Owen. Uh, Counselor Owen, do you want to speak first or someone on the other?
Sure, uh, through you, Madam Chair. Again, it's just efficient use of uh. Of uh taxpayers' money, and anytime we can save taxpayers' money, I'm in favor of doing. Thank you.
Treasure, can you speak to this?
Through you, Madam Chair. Um, I don't really have much to add to this. I guess the timing would be the only thing I could perceive being an issue. Right, how long it takes to to get offices set up and stuff, you know, and stuff, so. Sorry, the way you've described it, I don't have a problem with it. We may want to talk to the Public Works Director about whether or not. That would be adequate in his mind at this point.
Madam Chair, when it comes to the storage containers. Yeah, I don't think there's any issues with storing indoors if we're gonna be liberating some space. Um, I know that we have several skids worth of filing material that had been put into our garage and taken up space. So we'll be able to liberate that if space is now available.
Economic, do you want to speak to this at all?
Through you, Madam Chair, uh, to Director Stefan, um. Do you think it, it's, it's feasible for, like, the treasurer brought up a timeline, like, depending when the offices here are available. To when you get the storage space, do you think you'll be able to coordinate?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I believe we can party.
Thank you very much.
After you, Madam Chair, uh, we do hope to have uh. The Development Services Department move over by, I was hoping the end of the summer. Um, a lot is contingent upon our elevator being operational. Uh, we keep kind of having delays during parts of the elevator, pushing back, but we're still. Uh, determined to get uh the department moved over by the. The ability of storage.
Any questions?
Oh, sorry, I crossed everything out.
Well, okay.
Sorry, I just.
So you just want to remove that item number nine?
Yeah.
We did last year.
Yeah.
Do you want everything else that's included? Any laws in the office, please?
Well, if you don't think that's necessary, that was the intent.
I was explaining.
Yeah, that's the explanation of why it should be removed, but if you, as clerk, don't feel that the explanation. Needs to be in that motion, so be it. I'm not opposed.
Uh, if you want the direction to be there, can we get it?
Okay, just perfect. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, moved by Mayor Stacy White, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen, that item number nine, storage containers, be removed. Uh. And to utilize office space freed up for moving staff to town hall, capital project, town hall, renovation, development services. Number thirty five. For within capital, within capital project town hall. Let me read that again, sorry. That item number nine, storage containers, be removed. From the capital project list, and uh, and to utilize the office space freed up for the moving, for moving staff. To town hall, um, which is item thirty five, within item thirty five, capital project, town hall, renovation, development services.
All in favor? None opposed? Motion carries. That's approved. Counselor Shaba, do you have any motions?
Yeah, I have a couple here. Uh, through you, uh, Madam Chair, to, to rest you.
Yeah.
Um, I went for a collaboration with uh Counselor Patrick Kylie, so uh.
I mean, the uh, the item number?
Yeah, I can get to that. And so when you see this, I'm sorry, so, sorry, if I got anything else mixed up here, but. Well, the, so the first one is item number one. So, uh, we are having that, uh, we have the overall plan. Replacement of landfill office, which costs thirty five thousand dollars from the tax levy. And taking it from, uh, this should be capitalized, not operating.
It is in capital. It is in capital. It's not in operating, it's in capital. Is it that you want it in operating?
No, it's in.
It's in capital. It's number twenty one of the capital budget.
Yeah.
Uh.
Okay.
Counselor Shaba? I think the treasure.
Just gonna say, maybe we're trying to identify that it doesn't move with the tax levy?
Yes.
Yeah, not, yeah, sorry, to move it away from the tax.
Yeah.
That's what I heard.
Okay.
Take it from the reserve. Yeah, sorry, yeah. So we're moving from the tax levy.
Wait, second here, one and two. Counselor Kylie, you're seconding?
You may have to change on paper.
Uh, yeah. Okay, moved by Counselor La Chaba, seconded by Patrick Kylie. Counselor Patrick Kylie, that thirty five thousand dollars allocated from item twenty one. Replacement of landfill office be removed from the tax levy and taken from reserves.
Counselor Kylie, can you speak to this?
I, first of all, it's a building, and I feel it should have been capitalized to begin with, so that's if project taken.
It is in capital. Is it that you want it out of the tax levy reserve?
Yeah.
Uh.
Sure. She, I just have a quick question. Which reserve are we, we're kind of denouncing? So the infrastructure capital. I was guessing is probably the closest to what we're talking about here?
Yeah, infrastructure, I agree. Three seventy five thousand dollars.
Yes.
So the infrastructure capital, I'm listening.
Yes.
Thank you, Treasure.
May I wait? Did you have?
No, that is that question. Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah.
We're gonna have uh the moment to re-read. Moved by Counselor La Chaba, seconded by Counselor Patrick Kylie, that the thirty five thousand dollars allocated for item twenty one replacement of landfill. Office be removed from the tax levy and taken from the infrastructure capital reserve.
All in favor? Any opposed? None? Motion carries. Counselor Shaba?
Hey, through you, Madam Chair, this is mine, the very last one, a couple from uh hashtag C zero eleven. This is carried forward from two thousand K two. Are you working on that?
C zero eleven. Carry over, C O eleven.
Oh, one.
Yeah, yeah. You're going.
Okay, uh, moved by myself, uh, seconded by Patrick Kylie, remove uh. Security Water Agency, we take inspection twenty thousand from tax levy. And uh, put it through water budget.
Sorry, do.
Water budget?
Water budget reserve.
Waterworks Capital. I just wanted to.
Okay.
Uh, Waterworks Capital?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry to over you.
Counselor Kylie?
Would that not call for a reduction in the reserve for Waterworks?
I'm right? I'm sure, yeah, I think that's exactly what we're.
So what, what reserve was that again?
Based in reserve fund, Waterworks Capital Projects.
Water was.
Water. I'm asking for treasure, thank you.
Sorry. Mind if I just ask the Public Works Director? Water, it's a water project? How is water?
Okay, so moved by Counselor La Chaba, seconded by Counselor Patrick Kylie. That the twenty thousand dollars allocated for item C O eleven Aqua intake inspections. Be removed from the tax levy. And taken from the Waterworks Capital Reserve Fund.
All in favor? None opposed? Motion carries. Counselor Owens?
Thank you. I've got just the one. So this one is moved by myself and Mayor Stacy White. It comes.
It comes from the.
Number, motion number?
I was just about to say this, it comes from the operational side, so there's not a specific number that goes with it, or if there were, if you, no, there's not a specific number.
Okay.
So I'll just read the motion as it is written, that the sum of fifty thousand dollars earmarked feasibility study to determine the viability of implementing a public transit system for the town of Kirkland Lake be removed from the two thousand twenty-four budget. And that the application to the rural transit solution funds be removed from the list of administration's priorities as identified in the corporate business plan and then the operational part of, excuse me, of the two thousand twenty-four budget.
Honor of the man?
I speak to it first of all.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought.
No, 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 that was just the reading of the motion, so essentially it comes down, we're paying for, we're cutting services that are discretionary to the town, we're laying people off. Uh, and then we're gonna keep investigating the possibility of adding another service that's not a core service for the town of Kirkland Lake. I think in the time of that, just isn't right. Uh, it, even though it may not potentially cost us anything at the moment, there's a lot of man hours that need to go into filing these reports and uh answering questions to the different ministries associated with this and finally, I was doing a bit of research on this one, because it's budget time all over the country and one of our neighboring municipalities is redefining their transit system right now, how they operate and the amount of vehicles in their fleet. And they've, they've awarded a thirteen million dollar contract for a five-year transit system and it comes out to roughly a million dollars per thousand hours of operation time. We can't do it, we simply can't afford, so I think right now, maybe down the road we can revisit it, but right now it's just shouldn't be a priority for this far stuff. Excuse me, far stuff to investigate. Thank you.
Honorable man.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, I couldn't agree more with the sentiments expressed by Counselor Owens. Um, I do believe that considering the budgetary constraints, recent decisions by members of council, the clear mandate from members of the public that engaged uh with the surveys that we need to focus on core services and if we are getting our discretionary service leads currently, I don't think we're in a position to add a new.
Any other questions at the moment?
Counselor, I think you, I'm, I'm, Chair, um, I think the reason this was um thought for at this time, because there is money available to pay for that feasibility study rather than uh conjecture of whether um, because we don't even know where might be supposed, so that, that's the reason it's here at this time, um, understanding that we do have financial constraints, but I, I would, I don't think it would hurt us to find out if it is possible.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Madam, I, Chair, I believe this item was against what I believe that we identified only in our strategic planning exercise was, was there, uh, correct when I'm wrong. Uh, and we should at least uh investigate the possibility of having a public transit in the future, so I believe that maybe I'm seeing that is see what will be correct when I'm wrong, but that was kind of the one of the things that were clearly to me identified there. For us to look at it, I mean, maybe not right away, but maybe look at it down the road, I mean, I, I looked at it as kind of a looking, looking ahead. Uh, you know, well, banking on the fact that the town will grow. So what, what would the town need in future for it to grow? I would suggest that one of them would be, um, you know, public transit, so there's nothing wrong with looking ahead uh to see if that, if that is something that might be reality in future, so I I am not, I, I'm not too sure, because this is one of those items that we, we, we put together and identify and now we're saying about, okay, we're gonna back the work coming and end of the story, no money towards it, we still, I, I do realize that with this goodbye, I get it. But at the same time, too, have to, again, spend a bit of money for something that will adapt the growth of the town uh in the future and.
And I just want to clarify, from a budget point of view, that there's a revenue and an expenditure of the same amount in the budget. Just to be very critical of that.
No, I, you, um, Chair, that uh, Counselor is quite correct, it wasn't the strategic plan, um, under operational aims. Uh, however, uh, as Mayor pointed out, um, and Counselor Owen, that uh, one of the strategic priorities is to identify core services. The strategic aim, uh, was for a future time period down the road, it was, it was identified in the plan. Of course, it's up to council how they want to navigate and.
Counselor Owens?
Through you, Madam Chair, uh, as my motion identifies its clearly takeout of the two thousand twenty-four budget time, so I think right now is simply not the time for this and also during these strategic council sessions we had, we were always told that the strategic corporate planner, this, oh, the title is a living document. It is published and then the reality changes at that time when we publish a document, we had a museum. Now we don't, so things change, municipality needs to adapt to our reality and right now I just feel that I mean, it, it's a council decision, but for two thousand twenty-four, let's focus on what we need to do before we start adding more services to the repertoire that we offer.
Counselor Dickens, uh, do you, uh, Madam, my name is Chair, um, I'm not sure we're adding to the budget as the treasurer indicated, there's a revenue and expense, so if we didn't, I, I think the caveat was if we didn't receive that funding, that if the, this study wouldn't happen. And it doesn't mean that if the study is complete, that we implement things at that point, it's just to give us information rather than looking at other uh communities, that things differently and uh just to look at what's out there, there's new technology, there's new funding and I think that's what was at the root of this.
Counselor Owen?
Through you, Madam Chair, um. I don't see how I can sit at this table with an honest face and say I'm gonna cut services that the residents of Kirkland Lake have had for many, many years and then turn around and say, I'm putting your taxes up at least seven percent. Oh, and by the way, I'm looking into adding new services, I can't sit here and do that with a straight face, I can't face the residents and say on one hand, I'm taken away and on the other hand, I'm looking at expanding. That does not mean that I'm not in favor of public transit, I am very much so, but I do not think the timing is now. And as Counselor Owens pointed out, while on paper it looks like a zero in and zero out, there's a lot of staff time involved. And that's not a zero in and zero out, that's when that staff could be concentrating on bolstering core services rather than looking at non-core down the road, thank you.
Honorable man. Thank you, Madam Chair, um, just to summarize what's, what's been said on both sides of this issue around the table. I think everyone recognizes that though the community could possibly benefit from, by saying, everybody at the table seem to have recognized that budget twenty twenty-four is not the time. Um, whether you're on side A or side B, it appears by comments made at the table. Everyone recognizes, we do appreciate the idea of public transit, but we cannot do this at this time.
Any other? Counselor Owen?
Yeah, and just, just to clarify, I would be, and if, if financial circumstances change within the town at a future date, I would be all in favor of pursuing this matter, because I do believe in public transit, I just don't think now is the time. Thank you.
Hey, could I have a reading of the motion, please? Certainly, Madam Chair, moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor, sorry, Mayor Stacy White. That the sum of five, fifty thousand dollars earmarked for feasibility study to determine the viability of implementing a public transit system for the town of Kirkland Lake be removed from the twenty twenty-four budget and that the application to the rural transit solutions fund be removed from the list of administrative priorities as identified in the corporate business plan and the operational uh part of the twenty twenty-four budget.
All in favor? Those opposed? To Jordan, that's my, oh, my, her, her. Counselor Dickens?
Um, do you, Madam Chair, I, I'm not sure, I'm only put this through, because um I guess the process wasn't clear beforehand, so I think it renders this useless, um. Yeah, I don't know by shape.
So we'll take a five-minute recess, I'm gonna see if I can help Counselor Dickens create a motion out of uh what she's proposing and we'll return, five minutes, it's sixteen oh one, so. Thank you for coming back, um. Back in session. Counselor Dickens?
Um, may I defer until, uh.
Uh, absolutely, we will defer Counselor Dickens' motions until the completion of motions by the rest of council. Counselor Owen, ready to go?
Sure, I have no motions.
Thank you, Counselor Owen, Counselor Kylie?
No, it's difficult. Uh, to review, uh, Madam Chair. Uh, I have one motion. Uh, first of all, I don't like the, the processing done.
First of all, yeah.
I'm the old man on the totem pole, I get whatever's left. There's nothing left. I got the promise.
Will be.
Number fourteen, half-ton pickup truck, uh, seventy-one thousand two thirty-two. They've got removed for this year, use old truck one year, otherwise, uh, and uh share vehicles with the other departments. The alternative is purchasing that used truck at half the price. But I prefer to remove this totally, they think we got enough pickup trucks on the road and uh we have to learn to share with the different departments.
Counselor Kylie, who's your second there, sorry?
Moved by myself, uh, seconded by La.
Thank you.
Three, I'm gonna do some clarification of it. It's only, there's two parts to the motion here, is it just to remove item fourteen to start? And then if, whatever the ultimate decision is, then is it an alternative? Because I need to know there's two parts to that motion.
Is there two parts to the motion or just to simply have it removed from the budget?
Remove from the budget.
Okay. Counselor Kylie, I'm sorry, I interrupted, do you want to continue?
No.
So you want to have the half-ton pickup truck at the cost of?
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one, two thirty-two, removed from the twenty twenty-four budget.
Yes.
Well, I just quickly clarified that, that, that wasn't coming from the tax levy, it was gonna be debt to pay for it. Just, just to be, again, I'm just being technical here in front of everybody.
It's debt?
Yeah, we were going to. Or, or like that. Okay.
So I'll revise my, uh. Wait, a portion then. Purchase the used truck at half the price.
Okay, so you, well, I, through you, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. So I'm gonna do the math here.
You don't have.
That's okay, so thirty-five thousand five hundred dollars, so.
Towards the purchase of the truck.
Hold on one second, it, it will be towards the purchase of the truck, it'll be I think it still needs to be thirty-five thousand five hundred, uh, to change seventy-one, two thirty-two to thirty-five by.
Thirty-five, six, sixteen.
And that would still be a debt.
Sorry, that was gonna be my question to you, Madam Chair, is, are we still using debt in that scenario?
Or do you have a request for?
We'll go debt.
Yeah, okay, okay, so it's simply just a change in number at this point. So that item, so moved by Counselor Patrick Kylie, seconded by Counselor La Chaba, that item fourteen, half-ton pickup truck be changed from seventy-one thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars to thirty-five thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars.
Works Department, I have this, oh, I'm sorry, my apologies. Counselor Shaba? Counselor Shaba?
I'm, I'm fine with this, I'm fine with your resolution.
And his rationale, do you have any other thoughts of? I'm gonna have the Works Department speak first and then.
Great, Madam Chair. When I got here, our fleet was quite rusty, very rusty and we've been uh working very hard with our mechanics that are very eager to fix anything broken and we're putting money aside in our operations to continually repair and do bodywork on our existing equipment. We have taken a vehicle off the road to replace with this one, because of the safety condition of it. I, I would still encourage to purchase new, because we'll get more out of the value for a long, long repaired tire and I'm confident in our mechanics that we have our hand to, to keep them up to speed. That's my own.
Counselor Owen?
Uh, through you, Madam Chair, yeah, I'm not sure how much of a pickup you're gonna get for thirty-five grand, I don't think it's gonna be all that up to par, I, I really don't, vehicles are super expensive. Um, we've already downsized the uh building departments from a truck to a SUV, which is something this counsel had requested in the past. I hate purchasing new equipment, especially when we don't have a fleet management program, but that's gonna be discussed this year. But if they've taken it off the road because it's not safe, I don't think they had extra vehicles to start with. I, uh, so I, I am in favor of leaving it at the price it is. I'm not sure that I really want to finance the whole thing, maybe we could look at taking some of the reserves, I don't know, the treasurer would know better than me. But I also agree with Counselor Kylie that we gotta stop operating in, in silos. That a town of Kirkland Lake truck is a town of Kirkland Lake truck. It's not a wrecked apartment truck, it's not a works truck, it's not a water department truck, it's a corporation, kind of very light. And yes, um, there are times when they have to be dedicated, but there are other times where they could be shared and I don't believe that's happening, so I do agree, but that is an organizational change that would take over a long period of time. But I think it's something we'll be looking at, um, thank you.
Honorable man. Uh, through you, Madam Chair, um, just to be clear, we were given early on in um this term, a ten-year fleet management document for um our vehicles, was this part of that document?
Through Madam Chair, yes, this was a part of the S M H, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Owens?
Uh, through you, Madam Chair, I, unfortunately, I don't, I don't think we have a choice, it's part of the fleet management plan, so like if we wait and put it down the road, it, it's not gonna help our staff do the job they have to do and I agree with Counselor Owen, that buying a pickup truck at thirty-five thousand dollars you may not be in better shape than what you're replacing, there might be as much rust on the new one than the old one, so if we're gonna spend the money, it'll last longer, we'll get more used on vehicles, so I'm not in favor of this one.
Counselor Kylie?
I would agree to, we, we move the resolution. When I saw the segment one, uh, three thirty-two and other, I thought it was coming out of the operating. It did indicate we're using a debt instrument.
Didn't indicate we're using a debt instrument, so I'm I'm fine with uh. Using that since it's a debt, so withdraw it.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. Okay, so we're gonna finance this, how many years we gonna finance?
I don't wanna have sidebar conversations, it's just so that everybody knows what's going on. Counselor Owen, if you have, if you wish to put forward a motion to uh, look at. The different purchase of this. Yeah, like what options, a different option than what's already listed here?
I I'm not putting forward a motion at this time to change financing, I'm asking. Over how many years for financing? That's that's all I'm asking. I I'm not, like, it's a small, relatively small amount to borrow, so I'm not worried about.
Through you, Madam Chair, I don't think we identified a very specific who we're gonna borrow from, whether it's from the manufacturer. Or on our, through our our ability to borrow from the bank, or there's a couple other places who are here to. Lend money to municipalities, so we didn't identify a specific source. Kind of tip, I would expect it to be in five, six year type range, which is kind of normal for vehicles.
Counselor Shala, we agree to withdraw the motion.
Oh, yeah.
I have one other item. This is from, I initially had to remove the. Uh, local renovations, one sixty six eight eighty.
What's the number?
Number four, number seven. And take that out of the reserves, no, it doesn't exist on that we use tonight. On the last man to get, get up, so I've got the leftovers. So whatever's left over, about two percent, I would like to go towards. Uh, lowering the cost of the renovations. I don't know what, what amount, I have one sixty six, obviously, most of it's been used.
Now, Counselor Kylie, um, can we just do the process, so it's moved by you and who's your seconder? Counselor Shala? We have people working over here, so. So the motion was to.
He has the paper.
Oh, yeah, can you read just what you have on the?
Well, I, this is not what I had, I have a change of because being the last person. Whatever, I don't know what's left over on the uh.
Just put it in your motion as as you have it.
Just for a point of clarification, Counselor Kylie, my two percent is separate than everything else. So if you want to use um, a hundred and sixty six out of a different reserve. That's up to you. That two percent that I asked for is over and above any other motion at the table. So if you want to bring forth another one sixty six out of a different reserve, you're not taking it out of the two percent. That we've already voted unanimously for.
Okay, that wasn't clear. It is now. So my motion is to remove uh, one sixty six eight eighty. Uh, from uh, the operating, that's item number fourteen, from the pool renovations.
Okay, so you said number seven, and then are you saying number seven or number?
Number seven, sir.
So it's just to transfer the one uh, one hundred and sixty six thousand six hundred and eighty dollars from the tax levy. To the which reserve.
Let me just clarify here, I think I know what's going on here in confusion. So, one point one million dollar tax stabilization reserve has been drawn down approximately two hundred and sixty thousand dollars at this point. There's still lots of money in there if you want to use that particular service. Yep, there's lots left for you. So tax stabilization.
Again.
Hey, wait, let her finish though.
That this um, under project number seven, community complex old pool. Sum of one thousand six hundred and sixty six dollars and sixty, six hundred. One hundred and sixty six thousand six hundred and eighty dollars be removed from the tax levy and be drawn from the tax stabilization.
Correct.
Moved by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Counselor Vlad Shala.
Yeah, it's important that motion, I'd like to just comment uh. The finance chair or clerk, I'm sorry. Treasurers, sorry. Said that that reserve is basically for extraordinary items. Uh, I think this is an extraordinary year, where we're looking at nine point eight percent. Uh, is very difficult for the taxpayers currently, and I think uh. This doesn't deplete our reserves that badly by uh, use, so I do support this motion.
Counselor Shala?
Yeah, I agree, uh, because again, that was the, what through you, Madam Chair, the part of the decision I was seeking, because people have been. Uncle confused that uh, your motion uh, was should draw down to one point one six. One point one six million, it didn't, you just took out two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, but. So now we're asking that further draw it down by one hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars towards this. And again, that would have the bottom mile of the uh, the school tax lighting.
Questions?
Uh, just a comment, so when we created the tax stabilization fund at the time, it was specifically to um. Do what I used it for, it was not meant specifically to take items specific out of. It was to stabilize taxation, um, and I believe the wording at the time would support that. Um, therefore, I wouldn't support it coming out of the tax stabilization fund, we've only withdrawn to. And correct me if I'm wrong this evening, thirty five thousand out of the infrastructure capital reserves. And so I would rather take it out of that specific reserve because it's a capital project, take it out of the capital reserves. Keep tax stabilization for tax stabilization, but I do support that it shouldn't come out.
How much was in that?
Three seventy five.
The question's. Yes, to the treasurer, sorry, you don't.
Much as I'm seeing, Madam Chair, there's about thirty, three hundred and forty thousand in there after the previous motion.
Okay.
So there is enough.
I concur with the mayor's statement.
So you wish to change?
The amendment on the floor? Is it a friendly amendment? No, I, which means, are you amending the previous motion?
And lad is going to second.
So this is the infrastructure, what's it called, Mr. Treasurer?
Infrastructure capital reserve.
Reserve. So the motion be amended that these uh, for item number seven, community complex. The sum of one, one hundred and sixty six thousand six hundred and eighty dollars be removed from the tax levy and be drawn from the infrastructure capital reserve.
Counselor Owen?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair, I just want to uh, thank Counselor Kylie for coming up with that, that's something I missed. It's a one-time expense, so I consider it an extraordinary charge. Um, and I think that's very appropriate to use to reserve fund rather than hit the taxpayer. It's not something that's gonna repeat over and over and over again, uh, this way we have the money and it's not gonna affect taxes, so. Thank you, Counselor Kylie.
Any other questions or comments?
Could I have the motion then? So moved by Counselor Pat Kylie, seconded by Counselor Vlad Shala. Uh, that um, under number seven, community complex old pool, the sum of one hundred and sixty six thousand. Six hundred and eighty dollars be removed from the tax levy and be drawn from the infrastructure capital reserve.
All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. I'm returning to Counselor Dickens at this time, do you have any motions that you wish to report?
Um, I do, uh, Madam Finance Chair, um, before I do, I have a question for clarity, please.
Sure.
Um, to to the treasurer, um, with with the transfers to reserve fund. Just ballpark, where are we at with the municipal tax levy?
Madam Chair, very, very ballpark, oh, five point eight six. This we're with the motions that are in front of us, we're bringing it down to about five point eight to six percent. Versus the nine point eight we started evening.
Um, this is a clarity question too, I I hear two percent were going to use from the tax stabilization fund. What does that? I I keep hearing two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, that two percent of one point six million is not. So I I'm just, just want that to be as the one.
Madam Chair, Counselor Dickens, so you, the tax levy is approximately thirteen million dollars. So each percentage change in that tax levy is approximately a hundred and thirty thousand. So when when you put forward a two percent motion, that puts us in the two hundred and sixty thousand dollar range as a reduction. So.
Okay.
That's where the percentage in the one thirty is coming from, it's based on the total levy.
Yeah, wasn't clear that it was two percent of the stabilization fund that we had in place or a two percent reduction in the municipal tax levy. I think that's what you're saying.
Would you like the clerk to re-read the motion?
I just needed the clarity of if if it was two percent reduction in the municipal tax levy that it was going to uh, realize.
How about we have it read so that you know what it, what it was, that you know the match.
So uh, just matter of procedure, I'll read the resolution number one, uh, which was moved by Counselor, uh, ma- sorry, Mayor Stacey Way. Seconded by Counselor Casey Owen, that the dollar amount equivalent to two percent from the tax stabilization reserve be. Uh, used to decrease the tax levy requirements for twenty twenty four budget.
See, that's still, sorry. That that still uh, wasn't really clear uh, to me, but that's okay, that's what we did, um.
I'm not sure what you're not clear on, and I'd like for you to be clear, so you. Tell me what it is that you're not understanding, and I'll have the treasurer try and clarify.
Okay, um. And Madam uh, Finance Chair, when I heard the motion, it was a reduction, or sorry, use two percent of the stabilization fund. Which is radically different than uh, use two hundred and sixty thousand dollars of the stabilization fund to reduce the. That that's all, as long as that's what we did, the two hundred.
Madam Chair, that is correct. So through through you total counsel, the way the motion is read, it states the dollar amount equivalent to two percent. From the tax stabilization reserve. Be used to decrease the tax levy requirement for twenty twenty four, so it's twenty two percent from the tax stabilization reserve. If there needs to be a change to this, this would be the time to make the change.
Treasurer, do you have?
I think you missed a couple of words on the first motion, we can say two percent of the tax levy. Would get us, would make it clear that we're asking for two sixty.
Reconsideration, yeah, so. Mayor White, no, no.
So I will bring forward any clarification needed. Um, in the future, if there is questions about what we are voting on.
Yeah.
As a point of procedure, it should be done at that time because it was my intent to do the equivalent. And I believe that's what members thought they were voting on, if it was not the case at the time. Then we need to open up the discussion again as a point of order, so I will floor it. Um, I need a seconder, yes? Casey, go second again.
So it's through the chair. So I need to put forward a motion to reconsider, no, you don't need to put a motion back.
Who's putting through, okay. Counselor Dickens, do you have a question or are you looking to do?
I do, so at the time, I understood that it was two percent of the stabilization fund, which was about twenty thousand dollars. Subsequent to that, there was further discussion, like not part of our discussion, and I heard two hundred and sixty. Thousand dollars, uh, so that's why I wanted clarity, I was voting on what the motion actually said, so I I.
It's the way the word, the motion is worded, that is, that needs to be regained.
Yes. Honor the mayor.
So I'll put a motion forward. So I am to reconsider item number one or resolution number one. Thanks, I can go ahead with the wording?
Number thirty five.
Madam number thirty five. To you, see, and this is.
Never mind.
Thank you for the help, but no. So it is overall, yeah, so to um, so. Because it's the equivalent, correct? Yeah, please.
I'm not sure, perhaps we should be saying, like, withdraw the equivalent to two percent of the tax levy from the. Tax stabilization reserve. And and if you want to be more clear, you're saying approximately the amount of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That way, there's no confusion anywhere, I wrote it down exactly as I understood it, so.
Yeah.
But it's, I see the wording, you could read it a different way, but it's really what's happening here. So we say two percent of the tax levy, we're being very, we're not talking about, no, we're. We're not comparing it to the tax stabilization balance, we're talking about the total tax levy.
As was the intent, so.
Yeah, understood, and that's what I looked at too.
Yeah.
But the wording was.
We'll keep Mayor White and Counselor Owen as a seconder. Counselor Shala, do you have a question?
Um, I think I, I first time around, I would agree, I don't think it was like two percent of the uh. Uh, tax stabilization, but now, for two percent of the municipal tax levy, because then. Where's that two percent, because I should go around the table trying to take things out of the tax levy. So that balance is only this moving. So I don't, just two percent, or two percent when you started, I didn't know, sorry.
To be clear, any percentages, any dollars we're talking about are based on the budget that was submitted. So two percent of the, we say two percent of the tax levy, it's two percent of the original budget submitted.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, read what needs to be said to get the intent and the understanding at the time, absolutely.
Okay, so it would be moved by, this is a motion of reconsideration, so you need to have a vote for, to reconsider motion number one first. So you need to call for. So we have to call the vote.
All in favor?
Motion number one.
Of motion number one? All in favor again, please, just so I can see, okay, all in favor, motion carried. So new motion?
Moved by. Moved by, uh, Mayor Stacey White, seconded by Counselor Casey Owen, uh, that the treasurer draw two percent of the tax levy from the tax stabilization reserve to decrease the tax levy requirements for the twenty twenty-four budget.
All in favor? Counselor, what was motion here?
Do you want to verify with the treasurer first?
Yeah, yeah.
It's face.
I know exactly what you're saying, but it will be in the budget that way. Two hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Probably two hundred and sixty.
Probably two hundred and sixty thousand coming out of the tax stabilization fund to reduce the total tax levy.
Yes.
Do, do you want, do you want it passed through Madam Chair to the treasurer? Does he want it? Does he need a better direction? This is the time to do it.
No, I'm fine.
Yeah. Most of them.
Yeah. Counselor Owen, I'm sorry. Do you have a question?
Yes, I do. In the interest of transparency, I do not want any confusion out there with the ratepayers. We are increasing taxes. I do not want any ratepayer coming back and saying we passed one thing, but we did another. I would like this to be as clear, as clear as it can be. Uh, that's just my opinion. I know the treasurer understands what we want. I know the people at the table understand what we want. But it's the ratepayer who understand with the way the motion is read, is written.
Would you like it to be reread or to have a?
I would like it to be written, so it is very, very clear.
So, to Madam Chair, it appears that the president is found it here very, very good. For direction of policy. Who is the one who has to really.
Um.
Okay, I'll withdraw my comments.
No, it's okay. Um, I would just, can you reread the motion so that with a clear understanding of what the treasurer needs and what will be published for the public? Can you just please read it again for me?
Sure. That the treasurer draw two percent of the tax levy from the tax stabilization reserves to decrease the tax levy requirements for the twenty twenty-four budget.
That's fine. I, like I say, I withdraw my comments and I apologize to council.
Counselor Dykens, do you have any motions that you would like to bring forward?
Did we vote on this? Okay. Um, in light of, um, Counselor Kylie's motion and in light of, uh, the treasurer's, uh, clarification on things, I, I do not have.
So I need a mover and a secondary to vote of us, um, honorable mayor and. Oh, yeah. Okay, I thought so. Yes. Sorry, so the honorable mayor and Counselor Owen.
Moved by Mayor Stacey White, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. A result of council received the responses and the federal questions surrounding the twenty twenty-four budget for the purposes. That the treasurer makes their requested amendments for the twenty twenty-four budget as so directed by council. And finally, that the twenty twenty-four budget, as amended, be presented for final approval of the special meeting of council dated April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four.
All in favors? Opposed, motion carries. Me or to?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Is this, do we still require this meeting Thursday?
No. No.
No.
There's no percentage.
Thank you, Finance Chair, Counselor Ranger. I do appreciate your hard work this evening. Uh, finance is never easy, um, and I think we got through it very, very well. Um, I just want to, um, let all council know how much I appreciate how smoothly deliberations went this evening. It can be contentious at times because we want to do the best for our ratepayers. Um, and I honestly believe through staff doing their part and council this evening, we provided the best that we can for twenty twenty-four. So thank you, everyone. Uh, moving on, items seven through fourteen, there are none, so we're just going to skip ahead. Um, because there, there is nothing to report under any of those items as per procedure. So we're going to move on to item fifteen, confirmation bylaw.
Uh, bylaw twenty-four twenty, moved by Counselor Dallas Ranger, seconded by Counselor Vlad Shava. A result of the following. You read a first, second, third time numbered pass sign by the American Civil Corporation Vehicle Safety. Bylaw number twenty-four twenty, being about the permanent pursuit of council at its meetings until Thursday, April fourth and Tuesday until July twenty-fourth.
All in favor? Opposed, item carried unanimous. Item number sixteen, adjournment.
Moved by Counselor Casey Owen, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. A result of this special meeting of council, and now adjourned at six forty-seven P M.
All in favor? Opposed, non-noted, item carried unanimous.